Good evening. Welcome to the March 18th Board of Selectmen meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by the Foxborough Cable Access. We're going to immediately go into executive session for the purposes of reviewing the Steelworkers A and B, Unit A and B contracts. So do you want to...
Motion to enter into executive session to have union negotiations and strategy discussion regarding contract for the United Steelworkers AFL-CIO-CLC Unit A and United Steelworkers AFL-CIO-CLC Unit B.
Second.
All in favor?
Mark, yes.
Bill, yes?
Debbie, yes.
Dennis, yes.
We will be coming back at seven o'clock into regular session.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 18th Select Board meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. Let's see. Who can I pick on? Oh, Joe.
You can leave it open, Joe. Joe, leave it open.
Can the little people come in now?
Joe.
The regular folk.
I know.
We have to do the pledge, Joe.
Would you lead us in the pledge?
Of course I would.
I always look out and decide who I'm gonna pick on. You just happened to came in as I said it.
That's not a pick on. That's a pleasure.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. You made my day.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Okay, is anybody here for citizens input? Katie, anybody online?
No.
Okay. Okay. And so we're gonna go right to an executive session. There was discussion about some of our union contracts and we are ready to vote on.
Motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement for the Boy...
Nope.
Nope.
No. The United Steelworkers AFL-CIO-CLC Unit A and United Steelworkers AFL-CIO-CLC Unit B.
We should do it separately.
Sure. Then probably could be a clean...
So we'll do Unit A first.
Okay.
Second.
Any other discussion?
So just for public information, the agreement that's being ratified is at FY '26, 3 percent, FY '27 and '28, 2 and 1/2 percent. An additional step is being added at year '20 and some modifications to some longevity pay with an additional longevity pay after year '25 and on. And then a little bit of a clarification on tuition reimbursement being limited to $2,000 and also have a clawback on that if someone were to leave after going through the reimbursement. And one final piece was just on the holiday pay being paid based on what someone's actual work schedule hours are. So fairly, fairly simple in what's being modified.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they want to say? Okay.
Yeah, I guess just as a, for both contracts.
Yeah, it's gonna be similar. It's gonna be exactly the same for both contracts, but we'll vote each one separately.
Good catch, Doc. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Do you want to be there?
Motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement for United Steelworkers AFL-CIO-CLC Unit B.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Next up, we have a discussion for the tools that we're going to use for, to do Paige's evaluation for this year. So we have Pichar, Mike is here to have, so we can have this discussion, both the different tools.
Before, I apologize.
I know.
Only because it's on the agenda, Paige, should you mention why the library was put on hold?
Oh, of course.
Because it was an agenda item and I think we should mention it.
Sure, we did, yeah, we did amend it, but for those that didn't see it at home, there's nothing wrong with the library. They just haven't had a chance to vote as a unit on their contract, so we anticipate that being at a future meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Doc. Okay. Hey, Mike.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry, Steph.
Thank you so much. So just so the rest of the board knows, Bill and I had a meeting with Mike and Paige just to go over, you know, we have the tool we used for evaluations last year. Obviously, there was discussion about this 360. And then Mike actually brought forward another tool that a lot of other towns, you know, a common tool that other towns have used. So we wanted to bring them all in before the whole board and get, maybe get a sense on which, which direction we want to go. And of course Paige was part of that discussion as well.
Yeah, oh, yeah, like really, given where we are, the town manager's contract basically has her like annual, her, like her annual review period, like going from, I went from, I went from April 1st of 2024 to April 1st of 2025. So now we're just at the end of that year. I can, wanted to really come before you this evening to present a performance evaluation process, you know, that will be used to evaluate, you know, by the board. We did actually, we did spend some time going back to assess prior evaluation processes for the prior, for the prior town manager. And like we are proposing, as was mentioned, a few updates, like as part of the process here this year, especially to recognize a 360-degree evaluation component. What is really being proposed is, is a comprehensive evaluation process, really, really where the, really where the town manager would be evaluated in eight categories, ranging from leadership, planning and organizing, communication and community, and community relations, like in financial management as examples, like as examples of the eight, like and then also evaluated based on a review of prior year goals. Like as I just mentioned, like included, yeah, included as a requirement, you know, this year is a, is a 360-degree evaluation component, which be proposed that, that our department heads and board and our committee chairs will also be invited to provide feedback relating to their work for the town manager. That will actually rely on a, on a, on a separate evaluation tool that's been included in the packet. And we've identified a total of 18 department heads and 26 boarding committee chairs who will be invited to participate in the process. It is extremely, it is extremely important to note that boarding committee chairs are invited to provide only their individual feedback as it relates to their, as it relates to their experience working with the town manager regarding issues pertaining directly to their boarding committee. Like, oh, yeah, I mean, as we know, like it's important really to recognize that some our boarding committee chairs may have had, you know, limited interaction with the town manager. Like over the past year, like and if that has happened, you know, like really, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like in the 360 evaluation, a component, you know, where there is like a space to, you know, just identify that, you know, that, that evaluation or like an evaluation based on a, like specific area or, or a component is not applicable, you know, because we wouldn't want that information really, like which really they don't have any interaction or, you know, that they really, oh, can't, oh, they can't speak directly to how that interaction went, you know, we wouldn't want that to affect an evaluation either way. So we asked, oh, yeah, like in those areas, you know, in those areas, boarding committee chairs are just identifying not applicable, so I just wanted to call that out. Yeah, oh, yeah, but like really, again, what we're proposing, like is this, is this, is that this comprehensive process really begin tonight? Like we developed a timeline that would take us really to like sending out the 360 evaluation tool tomorrow to our department heads and boards and the committees. We would give them actually two weeks to provide like a response and feedback, like with all that information, like I will aggregate, like I will, I will aggregate all the information, present that back to, to the, to the town manager and to the board by April 3rd. And then actually by April, by April, by April 9th, the town manager will have a complete, like a self-evaluation on that information that's just submitted to the board. And then between, like April 9th and April 23rd, the board will have an opportunity to like complete with all that information, their own evaluations. And then between like April 23rd, oh, yeah, go around then, you know, they would also have the ability to, they would also have the ability to meet directly with the town manager to share their, like individual feedback. Like in after the, after the 23rd, between, between the 23rd and May 6th, like again, like, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like I'll go through, like I'll go through, like an average out and aggregate all the feedback, all the, you know, all the ratings, all the comments. And, and, oh, yeah, like I'll, oh, yeah, like I'll present that to the chair to have an advanced, so the board has a consensus document to present, to present, vote on and approve at the meeting on May 6th. And like again, like we want to just, like really be prepared with the upcoming election. We want to have this all done with the composition of the current board who has worked with Paige and Paige has worked for over the last year. And, you know, like make sure like we button up all these things, oh, yeah, like in the next like six to eight weeks or so. Happy to take any questions about anything I just mentioned, anything that's in the evaluations, anything anyone else.
Just a couple of comments. I've used this system a lot over the years and this is a very good form. You know, it's very comprehensive, almost too comprehensive in some regards. So just a couple of comments. One is, there's a lot of work here in filling this out when you look at all of the categories and the, the, the questions underneath each category. And then you add this piece, please provide supportive comments for this category. So there's a lot of comments beyond the scoring that you're asking people to do. And then you're doing at the end, which I have always felt is actually, actually the most helpful thing of the whole evaluation. And that's for, I guess, each of us in our instance, we would ask, what would we like Paige to do more of?
Mm-hmm.
You know, in terms of, you know, what we really have liked in particular about her performance? And what would we like her to do less of in terms of her overall performance? I have found that those questions yield more output than any other questions almost on here because people have to really think about it. They can't be optional. It seems like the other ones are optional. Please provide supportive comments for this category. I don't think those can be optional. I think those are critical questions that each board member should ask and it really provides some thought-provoking input and some thought-provoking analysis. That's just my experience with this kind of tool over the years.
So Dennis, I've heard that done differently, not what would you like more done and what would you like less done, but what, in evaluations that I've seen in the past, it's what, you know, have you performed well on and what haven't you performed well on? Kind of like where do you need to work versus what have you really kind of mastered? Because I don't think anybody wants, wants someone to do more just because they do better. It's really, it's a performance-based, you know, evaluation.
Right, right.
So it's a similar concept, but it's really kind of worded in a sense of where, where's your growth gonna be versus where are your weaknesses that you need to worry around? You know, versus how well have you done in some areas where you've done very well? So...
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I think, I think the other questions kind of teased that out significantly. This is really a question to really, it's really a question of the, a question that's really being asked by the person doing the evaluation. It's, it's specific from each individual board member. I mean, I think that's how I see it differently, but I'm just telling you in my experience, and I've used this tool maybe 20, 25 times, and I was always part of it, you know, and the feedback I got personally from that question was more helpful than any feedback I got from any other question. You know, because, you know, the waiting system, was it one through five or one through four?
One through four.
That's always a controversy is to use five or four questions. So, I mean, those are just, you know, checkmarks. So you don't really, outside of the checkmark, you don't get to read a lot into that, you know? I mean, you can go back to the criteria, of course, but it's still a checkmark at the end of the day. So, so with that kind of system, it's very helpful because you can bring it down to a numerical score and then you can aggregate the numerical scores, so it takes the bias out of it in terms of somebody doesn't like someone or whatever, because that happens surprisingly. So I, you know, so you don't get as much out of that as you think you might get out of that, but it's the comments that you get a lot out of and I have found those to be the most useful. And as long as the process is kept absolutely anonymous, you know, people have a comfort level to really make comments that are really helpful and fruitful. But...
Have the reviews been confidential in the past?
No, I don't think...
No, but the results are, so in the past, what we've done is we've compiled the pluses and minuses of us four, us five board members, but not who said that.
Right.
So, so the chair will know who said it and certainly the town manager will.
Oh, that's why, that's why I was a little confused, because I, last time, we, like when we each had the opportunity to go sit with Bill, like Bill had our, you know, he could, so we could have that, because otherwise how do you have the discussion? You know, like, yeah, yeah.
But anything to the public was...
Right. No, no, I understand that.
Okay, okay. I got a little confused too, because I was, because I was thinking to myself the same thing. I was, I was trying to remember last time and I said, oh, I think, you know, Bill knew, you know, that's, that's the only way you can, you know, sit down with the town manager and talk about it.
Well, that's different than my experience, you know, because...
Well, last, last, but last time...
It puts a little bit of a chill on it if people know who...
No, but Bill, Bill knew.
Got to be standing in front of your...
Yeah, Bill knew.
Bill knew who said what?
Yeah.
And you don't think that created a bias in terms of responses?
Did you, for Bill's contract, you, you evaluated Bill, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. But you remember we went in, oh, so you think we shouldn't do that?
Right.
But then how do you have the conversation with the town manager? Like...
Individually.
Individually. The individual.
Individually, yeah.
You know, like I understand what you're saying, like Doc said, the numbers are gonna be pulled. Last time, I think it was Doc, right? The time that we, we did this.
Yes.
Okay, so this time it'll be me.
Yep.
I basically go in and sit with Mike and just, you know, I think it's a lack of a better word, just someone, a second set of eyes to, to look at everything and then, and then the, you know, Paige will be given a general summary.
Yeah, consensus aggravation of it all.
Of the entire, and then, and then the time that we would go sit with Paige, she would be able, be able to see individually what, I mean, listen, in the big picture, obviously we, we sit here, it's our duty to, you know, to sit with Paige and Paige needs, needs to know what each one of us, you know, how, how we rated things, what our concerns with and that, and then, but the, the public will not know, right? Is it, are we on the same page, Dennis? Like, or did you, did you think, yeah?
No, he was thinking that nobody, in other words, you'd send yours in anonymously.
Yeah, and they're like, oh, okay, so nobody...
And it gets aggregated.
Yeah.
It all gets aggregated and the major themes come out of it and they're all provided to Paige. And it was actually Paige who would report back to the group in terms of what she got out of the whole process.
Oh, you, you were thinking that we wouldn't meet individually with Paige, so that we would have...
Well, I, I'm just saying, that was my experience doing it.
Oh, 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 when you, when you use this tool...
Yeah.
Before, okay.
Even meeting with Paige individually doesn't take the bias out of it, you know? Some people are fine, you know, handling that kind of negative feedback or providing that kind of negative feedback or positive feedback, other people on it, it's not as a, the anonymity is, is really, I think if you, you read up around the 360 process, the anonymity is a...
Well, the 360, we're talking two different things. The 360 itself would be an anonymous response from the department heads and the board member, you know, board chairs.
We would do the...
And that would come back.
We would also do the 360, and the, we would use the, we would do the 360?
No, no.
One would have its own...
We would get, we would get the responses. The, but the underlying main evaluation, which we do, would be, would not be anonymous.
So that wouldn't be a 360?
Right.
The 360 would be anonymous, but what is it, 18?
Yeah, the 18 department heads and the 26 boards and committees.
Dennis is talking about the 360.
Right.
And we were, we were talking...
360 would be anonymous.
Yeah. No, you're right, Dennis. We, we were talking about the second tool, like this one is gonna be a little bit, a little bit different. Oh, we're gonna discuss that, about which one, the 360 is the 360. We're not gonna do 360.
No, we're talking, what we're, what we're suggesting is doing both evaluations, but having the 360 done by the boards and department heads so that we would have that information back to us as to how it's viewed by groups of people that work with her directly.
Right.
On a day-in, day-out basis. Some may not do it day-in, day-out, some may. And that's to the point that Mike was saying, that if you really don't, if this particular area is not something you've dealt with Paige on, don't answer it like you have, you know, put it anonymous, you know? So I think if we want, I suppose we could do the 360, but I don't think that was the intent, but the 360 is feedback to us to say, how is the evaluation or how is the...
Interaction.
You know, between the town...
I know, I know, the discussion's a little confused because Bill and I sat with Mike and Paige, right? So, you know, obviously we want the whole, so our, our decision basically is to use the existing one that we have used in the past.
With the input of the 360 as just feedback.
And, or the one that Mike brought to us. Like the, the board used a completely different one last, last year. Or do we, or do we decide we weren't ever gonna hit that one?
The board has like a few different options. You know, this whole framework, you know, that's been proposed in the packet, the board has used that in the past. What we added to it...
We didn't use this one. But not last year. Remember, there was an abbreviated one for Bill's last review. Prior reviews were more thorough. Okay, okay, pri, and I think I only evaluated Bill once. That's, that's why I'm confused, okay?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I can, oh, I can hit, oh, and his prior reviews, like almost all of his prior reviews were based on this. Like in what we did, you know, and what we're proposing tonight, like is at the end of the framework that the board has, you know, traditionally used, you know, for more years than not, like we would add at the end, like really, oh, really a goal evaluation component as well. You know, for the opportunity, like for both Paige and the board, to evaluate how, oh, yeah, how she was able to accomplish the, oh, yeah, like all the goals that were agreed to by the board and Paige last year.
So the, the only real person who has seen both of them is Doc?
Right.
Because the only one I did was the abbrev, and, and Bill was getting ready to, it was a, just keeping, like finishing his and then us keeping him that small period of time. Okay.
Both of those, for all intents and purposes, sorry, both of those evaluations like are now included in one.
Right.
It's a very comprehensive, you know, it's a very comprehensive goal base, but also, yeah, a performance base as well.
Yeah, okay. So the board, just to be clear, so the board would do that one and, but, and you would already have the benefit of the 360 review from 700 people, maybe slight exaggeration to, to provide feedback. So I'll have the benefit of that as well as you, but that will be anonymous. That's one of the one, the folks, they can provide their name, but they don't have to. Yeah. And that, that I think was when Seth originally brought it before us and the whole, the whole goal was just for, and obviously this is, this will be for Paige, but Seth talked about it for other employees and he just thought it was a good tool to once a while just be able to, yeah, but, but this will be specifically... I'm the test, the crash test dummy on this one. There you go. Dummy probably being the operative word, but... Okay, so really, so really we're only going to just make a decision that this is what the whole board agrees, the process, that everybody is, agrees upon it as far as 360 for, for every, everybody else that's gonna participate except us, and then we will, we will use this, this one that Mike has kind of put together between. So this one includes in some form everything we used the last time for Bill. It's just, we're just, it's just mixed, everything's mixed in here. I want to bring up one issue that I heard you mention is May 6th. I don't think we meet May 6th, so we'll have to figure out, yeah.
It can be done after, though. The, the only point is, it, it, it doesn't tie to the new person coming in. Dennis, we just have to have Dennis's input and stuff completed. And he can actually complete it after town meeting. It just has to be as part of it. The new person is not in the evaluation.
Yeah.
Your...
So it might wait till the fall, it might wait till the Tuesday meeting after, it might be May 13th instead. And, and then, and then obviously Dennis, Dennis's will be tied in with us.
It's incorporated.
Incorporated. And if Dennis would, even if, if the timeline is that it's after you're, you're, you're done on the board, you can still meet with Paige.
But it would have already happened.
It should have all happened.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
The results won't be till after.
Yeah, right, right.
Oh, okay, that's right.
I'll work with whatever timeline works. I'm not going anywhere.
Yeah.
So if...
We're not letting you out yet, yeah.
So Dennis, if you want us to add the, the two things at the end of our evaluation as far as, you know, as a component to it.
Right.
As you said, it's not as easy to evaluate those from a points point of view. It's more as a perspective to be able to give back. I don't have a problem with that, so...
You know, now that I understand...
Well, isn't it already there? It was, you were, you liked what was there, didn't you?
No, he's saying he wants the two questions added at the end that basically...
Oh.
How do you, how do you want to...
Oh, well, we have...
Well, they're in there.
I thought I read that, it says...
They're in there. I was just commenting that that's a good feature.
Yeah, what would you like more of, what would you like less of? You're at the very end.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, you know, so the, each category has to provide supportive comments for the category. And then at the very end, we have accomplishments, suggestions. So the accomplishments are for us to be able to, you know, make special note to Paige, what we feel like she has, you know, she's done well. And then suggestions, because it uses the word criticisms, so, I mean, I hate to use the word criticism, but, you know...
Feedback, we'll call it feedback.
Yeah, yeah, that's a better way.
A little gentler.
Absolutely, better, better to put it. So in the suggestions would be something that, yeah, that individually if we thought that she could have done a little bit better or, or even if it's something that we like to see happen, so...
Right.
Okay, so you're good with that, Dennis?
Yeah, no, that's exactly...
All right. Everybody else good?
Good.
All right. So we, we don't have to take a, are we supposed to be, we don't have to take a vote?
What I would ask is just, are the board vote to approve the process and the tools as presented?
Perfect.
If that's the will of the board, just so we have really the formal beginning of the process and it's all documented, if that...
Perfect. Is there a motion in there?
No. Make a motion to use the tools as presented and the process as presented for the evaluation of the town manager.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thanks, Mike.
That's great. He's worked so hard on this. I know. He's put a lot of work.
No.
I know. And in such a short period of time, like, did, did you realize that when you got here, you were gonna get thrown into a contract?
I love it all, but like, everything at once has been great, honestly, so...
It really, I can't say, like, the one good thing for Mike is it is truly baptism by fire. This man knows every contract inside and out now. And it's hard to learn contract...
That might be an overstatement right now, but I'm getting it.
No, you know it pretty well. The thing is, is like, it's hard to memorize a contract without having to apply it. So the good thing is, good, is we've been applying it a lot through all these union negotiations. So now I feel like Mike has a very good working knowledge of most contracts.
The thing is, is like, it's hard to memorize a contract without having to apply it, so the good thing is, good, is we've been applying it a lot through all these union negotiations, so now I feel like Mike has a very good working knowledge of most contracts, because of course, none of them are the same, so.
Yeah, and that also means that we will never let you go. You know what I mean?
Amen.
We don't want to hear that you're looking somewhere else, because next time around, that'll just make it much easier.
He's stuck with us, we're stuck with him.
Okay, sounds perfect. Okay, all right, okay, so Bill, were you going to take, take this, let me take this category, the musical, talk about the school?
Yep.
Taylor, Taylor School specifically.
Right, so in your package, you have the letter or resolution that has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. The school committee approved this at their last meeting last week. This is something, if you've been on the board, you've done a couple of times already probably. This is going to be the fourth time that this will be submitted for the MSBA approval of the Taylor School facility. Like we did with the Burrow, the building committee is presenting this with two basic goals. We're not looking to tear down and rebuild, we're looking to replace, renovate and modernize the building that exists and to potentially add on to the building to take care of any obsolete or, you know, issues within the building that can't work functionally. So, which has gotten us a lot of credit in the past with the MSBA as far as, because it's typically, if you can obviously renovate and use a building, you can do it for more cost effective. Although I always get in arguments with the architects on that. But, you know, I think the, the end result here is we've done a lot of work on that school, the school committee has over the last, you know, 10, 15 years in preparation for this, but it really now is a 61-year-old building. It needs to be updated, the gymnasium and the cafeteria are the two core parts of the building, which are literally attached to classrooms. So when Jim is in and you're in one of those classrooms on that side, the ball's bouncing off their door, the, you know, the issues that, the noise that's coming from the gym is, is high. It's not the best facility. We had a similar issue at the Burrow with the cafeteria, and what we were able to do is obviously surround the cafeteria with walls. So now you don't have that same kind of flow going outward. The, so I think there's, you know, it's, it, we've got plenty of land there, almost 12 acres of land that we sit on. As part of the process, the, just like we did at the Burrow, DPW now is going to be bringing sewer connection down on North High Street to the school itself, so it's just going to have to be connected. We did that at the Burrow prior to doing the project and we're able to get it done, so we were able to do it ourselves versus having to pay for a contractor and get into the higher costs that way. So again, this is a process, it's going to take quite a bit of time. If we, we have to approve it as the board now for it to go to the next step. The statement of interest will go in, it will not get approved by or selected to go into the first phase until November or December of '25. It won't go into, well, it won't go actually into our discussion part of actually with the state until February or March of '26. We will have to have some money in that spring timeframe, because you have to hire the OPM at that point in time. I think we, we, about $800,000 is what we had last time, it's going to be a little bit more expensive probably this time, obviously with time passing. So, you know, again, we're hoping that we can lock down and get the, the Burrow project done and free up money for the first phase of this from the Burrow project, because it's a comparable project and therefore the funding can be used the same.
How much money was left in the bowl?
We think there's about a million dollars.
Okay.
Once the state finishes its audit. Yeah, so we, right now, there's only 30 or 40,000, I think, left, not, you know, not much, but it really is all based on the fact that they hold 5% back in their overall, you know, process, so, which should be close to 750 to, you know, a million dollars.
And if I remember, that's, and I remember, feel like I remember the numbers, back then it was like asking to get approved to town meeting, like, 600,000 to get the whole, that was the design and stuff, so basically.
No, we did, it was about 800,000 when we did the first part of it, so, yeah.
So, and then this, we'll be able to use that money that's coming back first, and then we'll go from there, okay.
Yep, so again, it's just, it's part of the MSBA's process that these two boards have to vote it before it can go to the next step.
Bill, is there going to, is this, are we just using the existing building or, like, I mean, I know the Burrow, there was.
No, they'll have to be in addition.
They'll put some type of.
Probably similar to what was done at the Burrow where, obviously it's no preschool.
Yeah.
But with the, a gym being pushed out and using the current gym space like they did probably at the Burrow, which worked well, which was for music and art having its own space separately within the building, and, and it's an interior block, so it's not a great classroom for a regular classroom being there in a day long. So it's not bad if you go in for a period and come out of it. And that's one thing that will give us the room to basically also put hallways into where the cafeteria is. So we're going to take space to do that as well, so.
So excellent summary of, you know, what, what needs to be done, a lot of work went into it, I can see. My only question, Bill, and you may not know the answer, is are these funds in any way tied to federal funds that could potentially be at risk?
Now, the MSBA funds, basically, the majority of the MSBA funding comes out of the lottery. So, they're, lottery, yeah, that's what, one of the funding sources is for that. So, so this is all state funding, this is no federal funding at all.
And what, once, once they, they, they okay the project for us, is it roughly a 50-50 split, or?
They, we got actually, and the reason I think we'll get closer to the million dollars is we, we received a, I don't remember, I'm sorry, I don't remember if it was silver or gold on the lead certification, which got us extra points in the end. And so basically, even though we get, I think we qualified under their terms for like 52%, but the reality is there are, are a number of areas that they won't go, they cap how much they'll give you. So as an example, site work, anything over $800,000, the town needs. So they'll split their percentage up to the 800,000, but if you went wild and built a whole, you know, sports complex, have fun.
Yeah, yeah.
So they have a number of areas like that, so it makes the 52 come back down, and to be honest with you, I think we're probably going to end up around 45% in the total cost. But, you know, it's, it is still a huge chunk of money that the taxpayers are not having, be asked for through town records.
It's being proven that the need is there, so, yeah.
This, like I said, 61 years old, they, we've, you know, done a new roof on it, but that's almost 20 years now since we did that new roof. We put brand-new boilers in the, because we knew it, when we decided we had to do the Burrow first, we knew that there's no way this building would have lasted that long on the boilers it had, so we put one, but we put them in with the size and design for what we believed the final size of the new building would be. So we've got plenty of horsepower within those boilers and they should last, you know, 25 years, so, you know, they're only probably five or six right now, so we could, should get plenty out of that, and that will save us quite a bit of money, because again, we did that pre, by, on our own. So, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of things going for it, but it's just, you know, it's getting the MSBA to push over.
And obviously, we're asking a lot of questions, a lot of those are for, once we get through this, so.
Well, I mean, I think that if the taxpayers have to be, you know, just like we have to be behind it, the taxpayers have to be behind it.
Yeah.
Because we will be looking for debt exclusion, you know, request like we did on the Burrow, which is a cost to the taxpayers for the next 20 years too, so.
Okay. Doug, Dennis, any other questions?
When we didn't get the money in the past, do they ever state why or do they not have to?
Didn't get what money?
Wasn't approved.
The other. Prior Taylor request.
Oh, no, it was kind of shocking, we, we put it in three years ago and they came out, actually, we were on a shortlist.
I was gonna say first, first year.
Which kind of stunned us, because we've never seen that happen, and we literally just missed it based on the amount of funding they had. And then the next two times, but it really comes down to, unfortunately, they're, they're faced with some very, very large projects that are, you know, in the hundreds of millions of dollars versus a, you know, $40 million project on this side. And a lot of those were woke schools and stuff like that, so they're trying to do that, so the funding doesn't go as far. But, you know, I think, you know, one of the things, even though they say they give you credit for, Foxborough has learned its lesson years and years ago, and we do maintain our buildings. So even though they're walking in a 61-year-old building, they look at it, it's clean, it's neat, lighting is good, you know, everything that you can do, that you have to do for safety purposes has been done over the years, but that's just because we need to make the thing last until we can get to this part of the process. So I think that's, you know, where some towns would just say, I don't want to go do anything, and the MSB will walk in, and you can tell the place is falling apart.
Just wait till they give you the money and you do it, and you do it.
And we just can't do that to the kids, we can't do it to the teachers, we, you know, sure aren't going to do it to the parents.
And so, and basically, the point here then is, even though, I, I remember, like, when, when you talking about it and saying, wow, we weren't, you know, I think we, one time, I might have had, whether you were talking at a school committee meeting and talking that usually it's two or three years and then that first year, but being on that first, first year, first year does not mean they're coming back year two. And, and obviously, they didn't come back year three either, so, okay.
This will be year four.
Yeah, well, okay.
What's that?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the SOI for the Taylor School to the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
All right.
All right, town managers update.
No.
Oh, wait a minute.
Recommended budget.
Oh, 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 my goodness, wouldn't, wouldn't that have been wonderful, Paige? I looked down and I saw town manager and I just, yeah.
So hello, I'm Paige Duckin, I'm the town manager.
Nice to meet you.
Brandon Roberts, Assistant Finance Director, acting finance director these days.
MVP of all right now, because this, this man is doing it all, wearing many hats.
Just asking out of curiosity, nothing with you, but when does Marie come back any, I'm just.
April 28th.
Okay.
She's not gone, let's be real, we were on a call.
I know, I know, but still, we know how hard Brandon's been working for us.
Yes, I'm sure he will be glad to have Marie back. So I'm going to let Brandon go through most of this, but we, we're here tonight to present the budget. It has changed, we have the budget book, but we do, in your, in your package today, you'll see some inserts, and in fact, I finally went through today and cut and paste them all into my book, because I got sick of the loose pages. So what we've now have the benefit of, one of the downsides to doing our budget process so early is a lot of the costs aren't fixed yet, you know, we had to put estimates in, and as we did, the good news is we're now getting the firm numbers, and I'll turn it over to Brandon, and he would like to present to you where we're, where we're coming in high, where we're coming in low, and how we plan to make it up.
Yeah, so the top page.
If you look on this sheet, this is the sheet you want to be looking at.
So I think the last time we met, we presented the preliminary budget, and as Paige mentioned, some of these costs were sort of unknown to us, and we were waiting for some feedback from various, you know, partners in this process. So if you look through this particular sheet, you'll essentially see what our original.
You just put the mic.
Oh, sorry. If you look through the, the top portion of the sheet, you're essentially going to see a, the town manager's original budget request, and then essentially our update in the column to the right. And then within that third column, there's essentially a surplus or deficit. So, you know, just going through these line by line, our SEMAC assessment is proposed to come in about $100,000 less than we budgeted. We were able to confirm that with Chief Kelleher and our SEMAC representative. On the southeastern regional, this has come in about $90,000 short from where we were originally estimating. After some discussion with the southeastern regional school district and their presentation to AdCom, we got additional information, and again, this is an assessment we just have to deal with. On the Norfolk Aggie side, this is a little bit shorter than we intended. One of the things that we had budgeted for a little bit further was a couple additional students as well as some special education costs. And talking with the business manager there, this is the first year that they'll be implementing those costs for at least two students, and we won't know final enrollment numbers until August, so we're being as conservative as we can just to build in a buffer in case a few more students during, during the summer process.
So obviously, Bill, you would know this and, so these numbers just flat out come in based on how many students? Just out of curiosity.
Well, Norfolk Aggie comes in based on student and a tuition base.
Okay.
So the southeastern regional is basically done as a share portion, part of it is with student base, but it, we're one of 27 communities. And they have their own board, which we have a member from town who sits on that. And they, they propose their budget, so it's not an easy one to fight, because you're fighting with 27 towns.
Is that, and does that number get divided evenly, or is that?
I think it's also proportional to.
Yeah, proportionally for the students, yeah.
Yeah.
I think so.
But we, we did, and I met with him, and then they did come into AdCom, southeastern regional, and the way they presented it to us is that they're at the minimum amount, that that, they are not asking for a penny more than they are allowed to, and that we got penalized, because Foxborough, where we are, we actually have a slight penalty, because, you know, compared to, say, a Brockton or whatnot. So it, it is fixed and it doesn't seem there's anything we can do. And like Brandon mentioned, the one new, fortunately, it's not a huge amount, but what was about $3,300 per student over on the Norfolk Aggie, in the years past, they've carried those costs, and now as of this year, they're, they informed us that night that they're carrying, that we have to pay for them. So when Brandon followed up, they said two students at this point, but that obviously could vary, but fortunately, it's only about $3,000 as opposed to some of the other specials we've seen.
Continuing on with the pension assessment, our original pension number that we got way back when we set the budget was, you know, essentially for a two-part payment, the town takes advantage of the, the beginning of the year payment, so there's some savings there. And then looking through our group insurance budget, we had originally budgeted 12% based on Maya's recommendation, but after they went through their process and determined the final rate increase, we're now higher than we anticipated, so we're a little bit of a shortfall in the budget. On the risk management side, we had two outstanding pieces.
A little bit, 235,000, just for clarity there.
Yep, a little bit surprising, so.
No control, no control of ours, you're right.
Do we get any analysis in terms of why it's going up that much, drop us in, you know, outside the norm of what these expenses.
Dennis's point, is this because of our, our experience rating, or is this just a group overall?
We just got that summary today, it's both, we do have a hike, we are high claims, and this year we came in higher than last year, but it's also a variety of things, people are going to the doctor more, the weight loss drugs and the more prescriptions are causing a heavy burden. What was some of the other ones, people are living longer, there was, they just had a whole litany of reasoning, and they're hoping that it, we're starting to hit the top of that, but we're, they can't guarantee it, obviously. But we were smack kind of in the middle of what they expected, we weren't on the highest, we were kind of in the middle.
Probably, as we come further out of COVID too, I mean, so many things, like, if it wasn't, it wasn't a necessary procedure, they were, so I'm sure that, that year going into the next year was, it was probably costing less, because.
Oh, costly.
You know.
COVID year and the year after were great.
Yeah, we got holidays.
Listen to me, listen to me, I should know better, I should know better, I wasn't anticipating that, but I just remember, like, it just felt like, when you were talking of people going to the doctor and stuff, that's what I was thinking more, I forgot what was actually, what was going on in the hospital.
It saved the town a ton of money, it reduced us, our costs, it reduced the, the employees' costs in those two years, just because nobody was going, because no one wanted to go with masks on everywhere, so.
Exactly.
But you're right, Steph, they did mention that people are going more and more to the doctor, and we did, and I will note, you know, for all of our sakes, I do remember it, we got premium holidays during that time, and that was something, in talking to my colleagues, asking, you know, some of these private insured towns, they were able to keep their reserves, and now for times like this, they can smooth over the bumps. We did ask Maya specifically, why can't we do that, and that's just not the model where they work, so that's why the employees were given the premium holiday at the time, they don't carry it through year to year, so that's why we will sort of experience the peaks and valleys as long as we're in Maya, so. But we are starting to look at, you know, it's, it's very involved getting into insurance, but we are working with a consultant to start talking on a variety of things, to, to make sure, because it is hard to navigate, and we have sort of kicked tires, but it, there's a lot to it, so we want to just make sure we're doing it right, but if we go too far, we could risk some of our current agreements, so we do.
And for people at home, am I correct, I mean, Maya, that's, that's the state, that's the state, right?
No, 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 we're, it's a private insurance group of municipalities.
Oh, okay, so it's not necessarily.
Like 170 towns, I think they said today, we happen to meet with them today, so.
All right, so.
How many did you say, 170?
I think it was like 170.
I was gonna say, because it's almost half of the state.
But, but they also, this Maya is also working with other states.
No.
Okay, I guess that's, I shouldn't, I shouldn't. Okay, I guess that's, I shouldn't, that's why I meant, not so much, it's the whole state, but that, and they're a big company who is 170?
They cater to municipalities, yes.
Okay.
So it's premium-based?
Yes.
You know, we're not self-insured.
Correct.
Well, effectively, it is a self-insured pool.
Yeah, in a big-
They do have, they do have overinsurances, but it is a self-insured pool in a sense.
Yeah, so the way it's described to us is, you know, we, we have our claims and we pay them, the sort of higher claims, we have to eat, but then the very high claims get thrown away and they go into the pool, so that's, but we are still up a little higher.
There's a tiered, tiered threshold on each, how the claims work out, depending on their So just continue on with the risk management portion of the budget.
I hate to, but you skipped 9/11 pension? Did I?
No.
Did you mention that?
That was the, we had savings because the budget, yeah, we prepay normally at the beginning of the year, the number that we originally got is representative of those two payments.
Okay.
So on the risk management side, we had some savings on there, we had originally budgeted a 13 and 10% increase, so those are dropping down to 6%, so we had some savings there. And because these fixed costs also feed into the, the enterprise portion of the town's operations, there's some savings on our indirect costs, which is essentially broken out on those two lines below the risk management budget. So there was about 7,234, and essentially revenue back to the pot, and $597. So if you were to look at the surplus slash deficits or shortfalls and surpluses, we're about $77,000 short. So we are proposing to essentially pull or make that difference from overlay in order to do that, and we believe we have healthy overlay reserves to accomplish that. So that's how we balance the budget. So the, the package that you guys received, the updated total is, I believe on the, the second page, which should be their revenue expenditure summary, so this bottom line there, fiscal '26, the 101,817,129 is the new total operating budget for the town.
Was last year a revalue year?
Yes.
Yeah. Why we have a hurry?
Yeah, there was a couple personal property issues that were captured as part of that as well.
Okay, where's that, where's that big number?
Should be the-
105?
118. I mean-
101.
101, 817.
101, 304?
Nope, 101, 817.
817, 129.
It's a-
Where am I, how come I'm not finding that? Oh, right here, I see it, I'm sorry, I found it.
I know, it's buried in like the middle of everything.
Yeah, well, you know, I was looking at the bottom, and I heard him say 101, and I looked and I'm like, I'm like, 304? No, he said 8. Okay, now I found it. All right.
I mean, overall, I mean, even though it's a little bit of a shortfall, it was pretty damn close.
Yes, we're, I mean, comparatively-
Yeah, I mean, we're not hundreds of thousands off.
You know, if it hadn't been for SEMRAC coming in lower, and some of these others, we'd be in a little bit more discomfort.
But some came in lower, some came in a little higher than expected.
Yeah, and the insurance is a big, if it wasn't for the insurance, you would have been the other way. Yeah, and we just got that, yeah, today.
So, so we're at, at 5.2, an increase from last year's.
In the total operating budget, yeah.
Okay. And I guess the only other question I have is, were all the other, were all the departments or most of the departments able to come in at the 3%? Or-
It's all over the place, but some are under.
Yeah, a little under.
Although I think, based on conversations we've had, when you put in the money that was reserved elsewhere, they come closer to the 3% when I looked at a couple of them. So, so yeah, I think the 3% is, is a safe number, obviously, schools didn't, they're like 3.5%, so, and on top of that, they still have the debt, not that, the expense for the special ed, but.
And Bill-
So I think when you, when you actually add that factor in, this, this is, it's kind of amazing that we're in a safe area.
Bill, were the schools able to, I mean, I know that they're, they're dealing with contracts as well, is that number they've given, is that what they, is that what they're hoping they're going to come into or not?
No, they were just trying to stay within what, as close as they could to the guidance that the town gave.
Okay. So that could end up being different, obviously, until-
Well, once it gets voted, it is what it is, and the only thing that happens after that is they have to make adjustments internally.
Oh, oh, okay, so, so even though, like I said, I mean, they're, the contract, the contracts were about money, not about other, other expenses, so then, then the superintendent with the school committee will have to make decisions based after that, okay.
But as we all know, this budget, basically as it's presented now, once voted, you know, at least the past practice has been, it can never be raised. So none of these lines can be raised at town meeting floor, they can be reduced at town meeting floor, but nothing can be raised. And that's kind of been the history of the town, whether it's valid or not.
Is this the same local receipts number we saw the last time, or?
Yeah, that hasn't changed.
Were, were any other groups added to the schedule for the coming?
Wow, I'm sorry, what do you mean, my groups? No, the, the, the original projections that Marie have has stayed the same since we originally presented the, the budget back in January, with the, the financial summit.
Any other questions? Deb, any sir? Okay.
Motion to approve the proposed town manager budget for FY '26.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, now, the town, the annual town meeting warrant draft. Okay, let's see.
So on this, Stephanie, this is just to sort of go over the warrant, so you all see it. I know last year, the board, I believe, did vote on each article, we're not proposing that for this evening, but this is more just to give you guys a chance to see it, and then suggest that if you have any, before the time comes to vote, that, you know, you talk to department heads, or if you have any questions on certain warrant articles, please do, do some research, and, you know, let us know if you need any help, because we will be asking, or I believe the board will want to vote on this in the weeks ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know the board's done this differently in the past, gone both ways, but, and it's obviously up to the board as a, as a whole to make a decision, but to me, it seems that we're put in these positions to basically give our recommendation on anything that goes in front of town. So while you can pick and select certain ones, and say those are our kind of responsibilities, I think in the end, you know, even though some of them are very benign in, in what they're requesting, it's a street, you know, acceptance or whatever, but it really is kind of incumbent on the, the board to say, yes, we agree or disagree with pretty much every one of these articles. I really just think that's what we're charged with, so when taxpayers get a clear, you know, opinion of that, they're gonna get that opinion from the AdCom, obviously.
Right.
But again, we are elected by the, the town basically to say we agree or disagree with how, what we're doing within the town, so that's my opinion, I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Yeah, well, when I, so when I first came on the board, like, like, so, you know, Dennis knows, you know, too, but sitting on AdCom first, we, you know, we voted on everything, and then, I think, I think before, years ago, I remember like watching a selectman's meeting and a select board meeting, and they were, they would vote on all, and then, I know somewhere when I first came on, I know Doc will remember, there was sometimes we decided to vote on some or not. I would like to see us, I, I, and basically, I always said, I didn't, I was okay whichever way, but I, I just thought, you vote on them or you don't vote, or, now, for me, I, I was, I thought we should vote on them, but I just thought we should be consistent, you know, and I know there were some board members that felt like, well, each board can make that decision, but it just, for me, it didn't seem like that's what we should be doing. I think we, we make a decision that whatever comes before us, and you know what, I, I know that could be changed, five years from now, if a, a sitting board says, we don't want to do it that way, and they want to flip it around, they'll, they would have the power to do that. I mean, I would love us to possibly take a vote that, that says that, that we are going to, you know, I mean, if, if everybody else agrees upon that, I mean, or if we'll take a vote on it, and if, if a board down the, I don't want to, I just didn't like it, it was like from year to year, that we were, we were gonna, and then it was certain ones, some that were sponsored by the board, I think one time we said we would vote on the citizens petitions, and I, I agree with you, Bill, I, I'd like to see us take, make a, a decision. And like I said, if, if a board five years from now decides that that's not what they want to do, they could come right back in and they could vote to, to go against what this board, I'd, I'd love just to see it consistent, we do or we don't. And I'd like to, my, my opinion would be for us to vote on them, and for exactly the same reasons you gave, that, you know, that, a lot, a lot of people, not that they shouldn't look into some of these, but people have put us here, you know, Frank has put that, put AdCom together, and a lot of people vote based on what the recommendations are, and they, I mean, they really should do their homework too, it shouldn't be just on us, but I think because we are the, pretty much the governing board, so, I don't know. Deb or Dennis, I mean, Dennis, I know you're, you're gonna be going, but you've sat on AdCom, you've sat on this board for, for three years, and, you know, your opinion, you know, I value your opinion, what you, you think, which way we should go with it.
Well, maybe I'm not following the, the conversation here, but when does AdCom weigh in relative to our overall vote?
To each warrant article?
Yeah.
They've been-
They've already voted, they're voting as they go along.
Right.
So-
Right.
But, so they, they're voting as they go along, they're preparing, they're getting ready to do their write-ups now.
Right. Well, maybe it was this, this past cycle, this past last town meeting, we didn't get the, get their votes literally till the town meeting.
I mean, we usually have them, what, by when, Katie, like, early, early in the month? I think, we have them, we usually have them by May.
Last year, their write-ups, there was an edit, so I had to reprint them, but-
They were out, they're out early.
On the website.
Yeah, I don't remember it being late, Dennis, I, I thought we knew a little bit ahead of time.
Is your point that you need their information to decide on your side, or?
I, I think-
I look at our board as an independent board to them, it's, we're not supposed to be just rubber stamping anything, we're all supposed to have our own opinion to it.
Well, I, I've always found their, their input to be very valuable.
Well, he, here's the other, the other piece to this, if we're gonna do that, then either we're, we're gonna have to have a way whether, see, if AdCom worked a little bit differently, it'd be much easier for us to be able to see the presentation, so that, that would be the only thing, like, you know, if we have, we have 30 articles, so we would probably either, if, if it's an article that, we're gonna have to, we're gonna, let's face it, if it's not before us, we're gonna have to hear something, or the thought that all five of us would be able to attend every AdCom meeting, to hear the presentation for each of these articles is probably, you know, with 30 articles, that's, you know, we would have to start earlier, like AdCom does, and maybe, you know, that, you know, we have to have them come in. So there would be a couple of long meetings for the board of selectmen, to, to be able to vote on them, right, basi, you know? Because how are we gonna vote unless-
But I, I think in general, I think that's why we've asked for this to come out now, is that if you look through them, I think most of you will agree, a lot of it's housekeeping, or, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
But there are some, a couple of big ones in here that are a little bit meatier, and if you feel that we need additional information for those meatier ones, we can ask the, the department head to come in and just present.
We've always been able to do that, and we've done that in the past, and now's the time for us to go through it and see, and let, you know, Paige and Katie know, you know, there are a couple of meaty ones, they should come in front of us, and we've done that in the past, absolutely.
And like looking at this one, we, you know, we're, we're already voting on, well, fire, right, we were in, in the, in the steel workers that we did, so-
Yeah, those are, those are the ones I'm saying, those are housekeeping, those aren't gonna be a real problem, but, but everybody should go down through this list, everybody should read the warrant articles, everybody should decide which ones that they feel that we need to bring somebody in front of, we, we talked to Paige and, and basically get that to happen. It's not going to be 34 articles that we're gonna have people come in and describe to us, because we obviously have heard a lot of detail on a lot of these already, but it's there are some that we should. So all we're saying is, from the five of us, if we each do that job and let that information-
Send us an email and tell us if you have a concern, and we'll make sure we can get-
And so, you know, we, we might have five department heads come in and just explain, you know, a couple of articles, or it could be, you know, a board member from, you know, planning or something, whatever.
Yeah, and you know something, Paige is always gonna be somewhat, you know, she's gonna have knowledge of all of these articles.
We hope, yeah.
And, let's put that on your evaluation, Ms. Duncan, but, so, yeah, so, I mean, even if it was just like all of a sudden, we were sitting here and we just, you know, happened to say, hey Paige, you know, do, do you know about a certain article? And if she could give us, you know, some, some answers, and if not, you know, we could, you know, we could call them in, or like you said, Bill, we have to just make sure that we get-
I really look at, I, you know, when you look down this list here, this-
We could vote on most of them right now, right?
We could, because we've been involved with them. But, but again, there are a couple that are a little bit more technical that we haven't had directly in front of us.
Like, would you want the health agent to come in?
Yeah.
I mean, there's quite a few health articles in here.
Right, right. So we haven't had direct contact with that or what that information is, but, you know, again, you know, any of the contracts, we obviously have an executive session on, you know, anything that's dealing with like, you know, the citizens petition, have actually been in front of us already, we understand what that's all about.
The floodplain, I mean, you might already know, I mean, that's, you might, you might want it, but it's really, you've done it probably five times, it's just a new tweak that the federal government's requiring us to do.
So, again, if, I think as board members, if we could all just kind of go down, highlight the ones that you have some concern about needing additional information, and we'll get those, you know, a few individuals or boards or whatever to come in and just explain in a little bit more detail at one of our next meetings.
Yeah, perfect.
Agree?
Yeah.
So, so, do, so would, would the board be comfortable, I don't know whether we, I don't know if we do it tonight, or at the next meeting, or do, do we want to have something that procedurally, that we would, this is what the board would do every year, so?
I don't think you can do, it doesn't matter, you, you have to just do what you're gonna do each year, because, like you said, if the next board wants to do something different, they're gonna do it, you can't hold them to that, so, we're, all we're doing, we're either making the decision, we're gonna put our, our stamp on each one of the warrant articles, or we're saying we're not. But if we are saying we're going to, then we just move forward.
Okay.
If it happens for five, six, seven years in a row, it sort of becomes semi-political.
Then, then-
Right, you know, there was a, a thought, when I was chair first time, you know, five, six years ago, that it could over-influence sometimes the voters. It, it, it was because there were a couple of issues that could have gone either way, and I don't remember what they were, and I think there were a couple of years where we didn't vote on all of them.
Okay.
But then, again, the policy changed, and the board changed, and I totally agree now where we're at, that we should vote on all of them.
Yeah, okay.
So if we could come to the next meeting, actually?
Well, I actually, I would suggest that, I mean, we have, so, the April 19th is what?
Well, the April 1st, if you were thinking that you wanted to have health, I could maybe ask Matt for the 1st.
Yeah.
I just did.
Oh, you did?
Sorry, we tagged, so, because when are they gonna have to vote? They'll have to vote on April 15?
Have to vote April 15. Have to vote April 15.
All right, so we only have the next meeting, so we need to know prior to the next meeting, you know, so just send me an email.
Yeah. That's all. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Before the next meeting.
Quick question, Paige, any, any word, I know, I know, we, we talked about it briefly, any word when we're going to know about being able to still zoom in?
Oh, yes, the House, House passed it, I think it was the House, right? The Senate didn't, so, yes, they're doing it. They did it this week, and the next, the other branch is voting, and they expect it to be on the governor's, so
Okay.
it's underway. We think we're going to have it.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking basically for myself, I will, I won't be here, I'll be away on the 15th, but listen, you know, there's still four, you know, even if we couldn't have done it, there's four board members, and you guys just vote. Like, you can't, you can't make that on, hopefully, all five of us will be able to chime in, but it is what it is, so, okay. I was just, for my, for my sake, I was just curious.
So, just quickly, myself looking down this list, it really is, to me, I think I'd like a little bit more information on the floodplain.
Okay.
On the, and just a quick answer on the, the sewer map thing, but I'll take a look at that, that may be self-explanatory, and, and then the, the health stuff. Other than that, everything we've all worked with.
I totally agree with Bill, I was going to say the same thing.
So, if we...
Floodplain, what, could take five minutes?
Right.
And...
Just so that's kind of out in the public and...
Correct.
But every other one of these, we've already dealt with.
Right.
In one way or another, so we should, we should be aware.
I'll message you now.
And Katie just reminded me that the controversial subject we had is when they legalized marijuana, and we were, remember that now?
Was it chicken?
And, yeah, so that was the big controversy at the time.
I, I believe I was on AdCom for that one, yes. And now that you bring it up, Doc, I remember. Thank you, Katie. Anybody, is there anything else that anybody sees? I mean, obviously, Bill said, Doc said, any, anything that you, you might want to? And then basically, so what happens is, if, if, if we don't, if there's not, the police contract is not, but, you know, is not forward?
Well, we're still hopeful, but yeah.
Oh, oh, exactly, but basically, we just skip over it. It's there because we're hoping...
We're hoping that we'll have something, yes.
All right. You guys, anything in particular that you, you would need a little? Okay. And you know something?
If you come up with something, just let Paige know.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, go through it, let Paige know.
Yeah.
So, I don't think, again, I don't think we're looking for any real heavy lists of things that we're not involved with already, though.
And just to make note, the highlighted sections are sections that are not 100% finalized in terms of the language.
Yeah, assume that. Who has knowledge on, on Article 25, the Chapter 99 bylaw amendment? Is that board health, too?
That's health.
That's board health, too? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, good. Great.
All right, super. Okay.
Next.
What's next?
Outdoor entertainment.
Okay, so this, you also have a handout in your package. It's a simple form. This form has been used for years. It came to light during the magic of lights this year. They paid, what, a $250 or $250 fee for the whole month plus? So, it just, we just changed the form to say $250 fee, and then put a parentheses, per event or per day, whichever is greater. So, then there would be $250 each day they were running an event. So, that's, and then I tweaked a little, I changed, originally, under please attach a plan, it had talked about, what's the word, what's that, social distancing? I couldn't remember that terminology we all used to use. This was sort of a COVID-era thing, so it had all stuff about social distancing and whatnot, so I deleted that. But other than that, the form is the same, has been used for the past several years. So, it would be just changing the fee from $250 flat fee for an application to $250 per event or per day, whichever's greater.
Motion?
Motion to amend and approve the temporary outdoor entertainment application and fee as discussed.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we have a certification of vote, and this is for the little parcel of land that was behind, that is behind Judy's Flowers. I'm, I'm happy to inform you that it sold for $12,500. And it did go to Judy's, thank goodness.
Oh, it did.
So, what we, we need, it's all set to go, and we just need Stephanie to sign the document. Perfect.
And as you said to us, there's, there were multiple bidders on this.
There were three bidders, yes, my apologies, three bidders, and for Judy's was the highest bidder, and...
And originally, we said we wouldn't take less than a thousand?
We said a minimum.
Well, no, we put out the, we put out the assessed value, so there wasn't...
Yeah, we didn't want to lose money, money on it, and we were pleasantly surprised, so...
Good.
Good.
All worked out.
That's right. Everybody's happy.
So, motion on that?
I hereby move that the select board, that one, sell the land known as Assessors Map 79, Parcel 16.1 at the rear of 34 School Street, Foxborough, Mass., to ERS management for $12,500 as authorized by and pursuant to Article 11 of the November 18, 2024 Foxborough Special Meeting, and to further, further authorize the Chair, Stephanie A. McGowan, to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to effectuate the sale of said property.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's up, it's up.
Okay.
Wait, you recognize the sound of a dead battery?
Sticky key, windows open, pressing key.
Yep. Here we go, town manager update.
Am I not, okay. Walnut Knoll is the senior housing project being built over at Walnut and 140. The applications are now available. There are paper copies here at Town Hall, but they prefer that you file online. The deadline is May 2nd for Building 1 and June 22nd for Building 2. And just important note is that those, the lotteries for each building will be handled separately, so if, if folks are interested in applying, be sure to apply to both, unless you have a preference, because they'll, each building is considered a separate project right now. We are a little worried about the third building, because obviously, they need funding from the federal government, and we're not sure how that's going to go. So, fortunately, I think it's only, what, 59 units, because we have 141 under construction, but, you know, that's a sign of the times.
Does that affect their viability?
We haven't heard that, no. I mean, I don't think so, they're very solid, but, and they are running ahead of schedule, so September 1st is when they hope, hope to open Phase 1. We haven't heard any concerns yet, but it's not great. Chief Grace has been selected to attend the USSS Command Staff Seminar in June. It used to be called the Dignitary Protection Seminar, and it's a five-day course offered to state and local partners who will be briefed on Office of Investigations, Protective and Intelligence Division, and on US, that's probably Secret Service, United States Secret Service Corps violations. There'll also be one day of protective briefings and demonstrations at their training facility in Beltsville, Maryland, and with the World Cup coming, there's a high probability of multiple heads of states will be in Gillette, so this is very beneficial for them. The expenses are paid for, travel, hotel and everything, by the Secrets, USSS, assuming that's the Secret Service, and he will be attending the course from June 2nd to June 5th, and there are no events at Gillette during that time. So, we're very proud of our police chief for that, for being recognized for that. In the bad news department, we have learned from Congressman Auchincloss's office that the $1.1 million we were awarded for our PFAS plant was not funded in President Trump's budget, so, at the continuing resolution, so we lost it. So, we're going to apply again, but we did lose the $1.1 million, so, stay tuned, we will be resubmitting. Last week, we held a department head training around an emergency preparedness scenario. Deputy Chief Grinier from the fire held an exercise where we walked through all the actions for a week-long power outage with a sewer backup in a, in the Walnut Street building. Knock on wood, doesn't happen, but that was our scenario of how we'd move multiple, so it was very helpful, and we intend to hold these exercises periodically just to get us, you know, our public safety officials, police and fire, are well-versed, but the rest of us, me, you know, our, our other department heads, Mora, it's good for us to practice this, so that we have muscle memory if the time comes in an emergency. We did get a review, a letter back from the Attorney General, it should be in your package, about the zoning articles. MBTA Communities was approved, accessory apartments was paused for 45 days, they asked for an extension to review it, and they did have some concerns, comments about the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee language, although when I read it, it looks like they've had this concern since 2014, when it first started, and they're just reaffirming their concern around, had that type of committee. Let's see. Regarding the digital sign on Foxborough Common that we, that was brought up at the last meeting, Bill, I just want you to know, we did look into it, it will regard zoning change, felt it's obviously too rushed for this year, so it'd be something that would be discussed maybe in the fall or next year, but it, we do have Barney Overit has already drafted the zoning, so he's, he doesn't waste any time, he's like, let me know if you need it for May. I said, I think it's a little too soon, but thank you to Barney, as usual, he's stepped right up and took care of that. I think I mentioned last time, I'll be at the Friends of Foxborough Seniors on April 19th, and we have a thank you to Creative Cabinets and Gary Whitehouse, they donated the fabrication and installation of a new wall-mounted enclosed bulletin board that's going to be used for finance and procurement. We had one bulletin board there, and we had a window that was being just always covered, and we were short on bulletin board space, so we had that fabricated, and now it's great because procurement has their own bulletin board, and then Bob Cutler has more space on his, so thank you very much. They had also done the reception desk and the other bulletin board, so we're very appreciative of that. We still do have two openings on the Personnel Board, and the 2025 Foxborough Horseshoe League was approved, they're going to run from April 7th till September 21st, and that's all I have.
Okay. All right, select board update. I don't have a thing for old or new business. Anybody on the board have anything that they want to share? No? Okay, short and sweet. There we go. All right. Onto action items, Deb.
Motion to appoint Laurie Ko to the Foxborough Cultural Council for a term to end May 31st, 2028.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the donation from Claudia O'Larry in the amount of $300 to the Foxborough Police Academy.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.